As Chair of the Southampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Southampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneity, listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 928-8437-5317, or by clicking on the website address which is listed on the agenda. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 Office at www.sau21.org. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 114, or email at dtuite@SAU21.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law.
Jim Keim?
Present and alone.
Rebecca Burdick? You're on mute. I can unmute it.
Got it here alone.
Thank you. Sharon Gordon?
Present and alone.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Actually have anybody? This is Donna Beadie. So. If anybody has a comment, they can raise your hand. Guessing that's not going to be the case in this scenario. Alright. Next is consideration of the minutes. We have two to consider here. The first is from November 5th, 2020. It looked good to me. Does anybody else? You guys are good with it?
Yep, good with me.
Alright, cool. Can I get a motion to approve the November 5th, 2020 meeting? Minutes as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 5th meeting minutes as written.
Jim Keim?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
The next one is from yesterday. It's the minutes from the December 2nd, 2020 Budget Review Meeting. How's also final these? Anybody else?
Yep.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December. Was that the third?
Second.
Second, as written.
Second.
Jim Keim?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Great. Next on the agenda is the Principals' Report. Michelle, you want to take us through that?
So I just wanted to update you on the start of the students who are coming from remote in person. It'll be starting on Monday. We have seven students coming. We have made adjustments in the building to accommodate for the students. We turned one classroom into a kindergarten classroom, splitting up the K-1, and that kindergarten team will be working together to teach both classrooms simultaneously. They started it this week and it's been working out really well, so we think it's going to be a successful change for us. The grade four or five classroom, we were able to move some furniture so that we could accommodate everybody in that room, so we didn't have to move into the isolation room. So that was really helpful and that's going to work out fine for the four or five classroom. And you know, I just want to reiterate again, we're doing so well here and I see schools all around us closing, and we're still doing really well, and it's really because of the families that were doing well. You're doing such, parents are doing such a great job at screening their students and keeping them home when they're sick, and that's the reason that we're open, so I just want to reiterate like how important that is and to keep doing it because that's why we're still here. Our first trimester ended today. Report cards will be open on Power School. We're going to try to go paperless this year, so parents will be able to access the report cards. It'll be open on December 15th through Power School. We're going to be sending some information home to help parents through that process, but it's fairly simple process. As far as staffing goes, we had one of our educational associates left us right before Thanksgiving. So you guys have probably seen the sign out front that we're looking for educational associates. We really need two, so if anybody knows of anyone, send them our way. We're getting by with what we have right now, but if anybody's leaves, we're going to be in a tight spot, so we really want to beef up our staff if we can. As far as competency-based education, we are still working towards that goal. The grades four through eight teachers continue to work with Jonathan Vander Els on competency-based teaching. They're developing performance assessments that align to the Common Core and to competencies, and they're developing authentic tasks that are relevant to student lives. And they're also working on rubrics that align to the competencies, and the rubrics provide a clear, explicit understanding of what the learning is that the students are working towards, and it also allows them to self-assess so that they can set their own personal goals toward meeting the competencies. And we're really putting a lot of focus on this because we want our students to be able to take ownership of their learning. And we're continuing with our social emotional learning programming. Our Guidance Counselor has been working with teachers to implement our Tier One program, and that's going really well. We've been focusing on regulating behaviors and developing a growth mindset. Technology-wise, our Chromebooks are still not here, but I've been, in the meantime, I've been in contact with a lot of other companies for the last couple of months, and I just got a lead today that somebody might have some for us, so I'm trying to work with breaking our old contract to get these, so stay tuned on that. I think we might have something soon. So. That's really it for the report. Do you have any questions?
How are you managing without the, how's everybody doing without the Chromebooks?
So we we borrowed some Chromebooks from Hampton Falls, and so, and we're using all of our desktop computers in the middle school. So they each have a desktop computer while they're here. At school, and we have enough to get through while we're here, but if we go remote, we really need those Chromebooks, so.
Even with the new kids, the seven new kids coming in, you're still okay?
Yeah, we'll be okay as long as we're here.
Okay.
We do have to share a little bit, but we just want to make sure that everybody has equal access to technology.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, could you just talk for a minute about what the SEL program looks like just in the day-to-day stuff?
Sure. So we're working on, so we've adopted the Choose Love Curriculum, which is a Tier One curriculum, classroom curriculum that works on regulating behaviors, works to teach students how to have a growth mindset, how to make good decisions, how to be responsible citizens. And so our Guidance Counselor once a week goes into each classroom and teaches these skills, and then she also does training for the teachers, so the teachers are continuing it throughout the week. That's basically the Tier One program.
Thank you.
Just what have you seen? I mean, you guys have done fantastic, I think from my perspective, I think all the school board members' perspective through the first trimester would have been the biggest challenges this year.
I think the biggest challenge is, and I think I've said this before, you know, we think that when we come back, when we were coming back to school, it was going to be great because we're in person, but it's a completely different way of teaching. And I think we, teachers kind of knew that it was a different way of teaching, but it's much more difficult than they imagined. And in some ways, it's even harder than remote, but they've gotten really good at figuring it out. It's just really difficult to keep students six feet apart and to have, you know, small groups of students because we're not able to do that anymore. But they're adjusting and the kids are adjusting, which is helpful. I mean, it's hard, it's noisy. The classroom's really noisy because normally in a normal classroom, you would pull the small group of kids aside and work with them, but the teacher's just standing there like projecting to everyone while the other kids are trying to work. But there's not really a whole lot of way we can get around them. I do think that's the most difficult part. But I have to say the teachers have been working really hard and they're really creative, the ideas that they've come up with, and they're utilizing the support staff to make that happen, like having recess splits, so some of the kids go outside while the small group is inside and then swapping. So they've gotten creative with spaces and utilizing everyone.
Okay. Well, thank you and the whole staff. I know it's not an easy one, but we think parents and kids certainly appreciate it.
Well, we're happy to be here and the staff is really happy to be here. We just want to continue.
Great.
So I do have a video that I wanted to show, if that's okay with you guys?
Yeah, that'd be great.
It might be a little bit long. It's about 10 minutes, but I wanted to sort of focus on the learning that's happening here because I feel like we spend so much time discussing COVID. And there's a lot of great things happening, and I want to celebrate the work that the teachers are doing and the progress that students are making despite what's going on around them. And so our, the whole school has just finished their narrative writing unit. Each grade level has been working on narrative writing, and so I have three grade levels, students that wanted to share their writing with the school board. This is only included up to fifth grade. We didn't include the middle school because their writing is pretty extensive and it would be a very extremely long video, so we only did the elementary. But if I can, oh, I have it. Let me, yeah, I don't have to. Give me one second. Alright, so see if you can do it now. Did you guys see that?
Yes.
Hopefully it worked. Last time it didn't work so great.
Let's play a Christmas story by Peyton Proffitt. I was three years old and it was Christmas. I saw a sheep. I felt happy and confused. Then I opened my toys. I liked all of them. I felt happy. Then, then dot, 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 I dot, 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 drove the sheep. I felt happy and I went. I felt happy and confused, and I went fast. Then I played with my toys. Then I I forget everything felt happy. Happy, happy. Then it was lunch. I felt hungry and my tummy was grumbling. I felt I hungry. Finally, it was lunchtime. I felt hungry. That was yummy. This is my narrative story called Star Wars. Yesterday I got home and I could not find anything to do. So I walked in circles and screamed, "Ahh!" And then I went on the hard floor. Until I thought of something to do. Yay! I screamed. I was so happy. I jumped up and I ran to my dad and said to him, "Let's play Battlefront." We played against each other. I chose Yoda and he picked Darth Vader. It's called Battlefront, but it's actually Star Wars. It's a game based off of the movie. I started off with a rocky start, and then I was getting better. And then I crushed him using my lightsaber to heal a wound and blew him up. Kablam! It made a kablam noise. It was really cool, but then he responded and threw his lightsaber at me. But I jumped up and dodged it. My heart was beating so fast and I screamed, "Woohoo! Yeah!" I was so happy. I ran around the room saying, "I am the best. I am the best," with my arms in the air, and then I lied on the couch. "Ah," I said, "let's play again sometime." That was fun. As he walked up the stairs, I said to myself, "Just wait until the next time, Dad." That's it.
Hi, my name is Ailin and I'm in fifth grade, and this is my story, Two Different Lives. Chapter one. Bam! The crash of sudden thunder made me jump. My name is Emerson, but my nickname is Emmy. My one and only dream is to live the famous life like the people in magazines. It probably won't happen though, but I'm sure I'll try. Until then though, I'm stuck here living with my mom. My parents divorced about a year ago and I've stayed with my mom since. The last time I saw my dad was when he was packing his bags, the last time. As I thumped down the stairs, I called mom. I heard a bowl smash. I ran to the kitchen to see if she was okay. Sitting on the floor picking up glass was my mom. "For heaven's sakes, Emmy, you scared me," she stuttered, still focused on the broken glass covering the floor. I was careful not to step in it. "Sorry," I apologized. "I thought you knew it was me." I still felt bad. "It's fine," she replied calmly. "I was just watching the newest news story about a local burglar. She was still shaken up." I bent over swiftly and hugged her. About to go make breakfast, I glanced at the TV and basically dropped dead. There was a new story, a new story about the new world famous actor, my own newly famous dad. "What are you looking at? Are you okay?" my mom asked. "Yeah," I replied. "It's just a new story." I finished breathless. I finished breathless and shocked. Just then the phone rang, almost causing my mom to break the second bowl of the day. She walked over and picked it up. She talked into it clearly and calmly. "Hello?" An hour later, she was still on the phone and having some sort of argument. "She can't," she stuttered, "but the judge said..." "What do you mean by go to court? She's only 12. She can't leave," she finally said. "Fine, just one week." After the phone call was over, she let out three set of words to me. "Pack your bags," and so I did. Chapter two. "Bye, Mom," I said. "Now you tell me if you want to stay with me," she demanded. "Mom, I haven't seen him in a year," I said. "Well, I'll be at the hotel down the street," she said, and then I was alone. As I gathered up on my courage, I rang the doorbell. The door opened and standing there was a butler. "Did you enjoy your first flight, Miss Emerson?" he asked. I looked at him horrified. "I'm your father's butler, Thomas." "Oh," I sighed and stepped into the main room. "This place is huge," I whispered. "Isn't it?" a man's voice said. "Dad!" I yelled. After he was down the long, beautiful marble stairs, I ran into his arms. That same old dad's smile brings back memories. "How was the flight?" he asked in a curious voice. I started to say bad, but slipped out of line, lying, trying not to make him feel bad. "I miss you," I wheezed, short of breath. He replied, "I miss you too." Suddenly the phone rang and he shot up and spoke. "I'll be right back. Your room is up the stairs and to the right." My ears perked up during the room part and I ran upstairs. I turned right and saw a door with the name Emmy on it and opened it. Once again, I almost dropped dead. Chapter three. A large bed draped in a soft, beautiful lime green blanket greeted me. Lights strung across the ceiling glistened brightly. A bookshelf and walk-in closet seemed to tell me, "Come and check it out." I did. I sat on the window seat, checking its comfort and tried on my new clothes. Last, I sat on the vanity and looked in the mirror. "I'm finally famous," I sighed. I got up and sat down on the window seat and watched the sunset in the distance. I gazed upon the large pool in our yard and wondered how life would be if I stayed forever. What would my mom think of me? After a while of thinking, I looked at the clock and decided that I was hungry. I left my room, reminding myself that I'd be back and walked down to the stairs, pretending I was in a movie. "Dad?" I called. "Boy, boy, it sure sounds good to say that." I decided to find him and give myself a personal tour, even though I didn't know where I was going. I walked into something that looked like an office and noticed and heard that my dad was still on the phone. "It's been four hours. My dad must be very talkative." "Dad, sorry, but what's for dinner?" I asked timidly. He didn't respond. "Dad?" I asked again. Still nothing. I walked up to him and tapped him on the shoulder. "Dad, what's for dinner?" I asked impatiently. But when he responded, it didn't sound like I wanted it to. "I don't know. Ask the chef for order takeout. That's, it's that easy," he yelled angrily. Tears started rolling down my cheeks and I rushed out of the office. I ran down the long hallway questioning my decisions. I could hear him say to his friend, "Sorry, it's my daughter. She can be a big handful." Then he laughed. I ran by the many maids into the kitchen. I grabbed the first phone and rushed up the stairs. As I opened my bedroom door, I dialed my mom's number, 978-246-9468. "Hello?" she asked. "Who is this?" "Dale. If it's you, I can't talk right now." "Mom, I want to go home. Dad yelled at me," I cried. Tears were still rolling down my cheeks. "What?" she asked, panicked. "Did he hit you? You tell me right now if he hit you," she demanded. "No, he didn't," I stuttered. "He just yelled at me and then said I'm such a handful to a snobby Hollywood friend," I complained to her. "Now I understand why I haven't seen him in a while," I added. "Well, it was for the best," she then added, "and an idea popped into my head." "Hey, Mom," I said. "I have an idea that'll help us get revenge on Dad." Chapter four. The phone call carried on for about 15 more minutes while my mom and I discussed our sinister plan. Though the plan was so evil, he definitely deserved it. "Now," I said to her. "It's time you try this out," I added and then laughed. "We're making progress." Ding dong! At my dad's house, the doorbell rang and I knew it was time. Thomas opened the door and a woman walked in holding a folded napkin. "May I speak to David Lionel's?" she asked in a grave voice. I could barely see her face behind the black hat and dark glasses. I could tell she was very serious though. As the butler guided her into the office, I followed quietly out of my hiding spot behind the railing. Then, of course, I happened to trip on my way down. I walked to the room where my dad and the woman were talking. Only the woman wasn't in her hat anymore. It was my mom. I ran into the room and yelled, "This wasn't supposed to happen. You were supposed to do what we planned." My mom replied, "I can't yell and be like that. I'm taking you home." Then she took my hand and we walked out the door. It's been a month now since I've seen my dad and I'm back living with my mom. If I stayed with my dad, I would have lived a miserable life. I got out of bed and walked down the stairs. I'm glad I'm home. I still feel bad, but it was instantaneous. I knew my choice was wrong. I think about it every day, how life would have been for me if I had stayed. Back then I thought it would be great, but now I know, like, that life is like a path. You have to follow until you reach the end.
That was a little bit long, but I just wanted to give a sample of what's been going on here and the students have been working really hard and so the teachers.
That was great, Michelle.
Thank you. That was awesome.
Yeah, it's funny to hear the other kids. I'd heard Mike, Charlotte's one, but it's funny to hear the other ones. It's good to, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it was nice. It's nice to see the kids happy and proud of something.
Before we move on, anything else? For Mrs. Whit? I think we're good. Alright. Next on the agenda is the finance report. Matt, do you want to take us through this?
Yes, thank you. So we've included the monthly year-to-date expenditure report as well as the revenue report. I do want to point out on the expenditure report, you'll see on the first page under the high school tuition, it shows an available balance of $118,000. This is a bit of a misnomer because it does not reflect the win it connects costs, so in fact, there's an available balance of $36,000. So overall, where the entire budget, there's an available balance of about $85,000. So this is something that we, you know, we will continue to monitor. Most of our expenditures are encumbered for the year, however, obviously, we are only into December and so we have another, you know, about seven months in the fiscal year, so it's something we are, we do need to be cognizant of. And potentially, as you know, we did have some special education costs that were not budgeted for that came up this year, so we could potentially make a withdrawal there or you know, potentially one of our other expendable trusts, we had under-budgeted tuition, so we perhaps, you know, withdraw from that expendable trust. That being said, we do hope to finish the year with, without, you know, withdrawing from any of our trusts ideally. The last item I wanted to address is the Supplemental Public School Response Fund. So back in May, if you recall, the SAU as a whole received funds via the CARES Thorough Stimulus Package. Unfortunately, South Hampton was not a recipient of any funds because it was based on Title I funding. However, there has been a second round of funding that the state is providing, and that's this Supplemental Public School Response Fund. Again, this is part of the CARES stimulus package, you know, at the federal level that the state is now allocating to schools. All told, the state's allocating approximately $45 million across the state, which translates to $200 per student at each of our schools. So Southampton did receive $22,800. So if you do the math, that doesn't necessarily translate to the number of students at Barnard School, so I just want to point out that that reflects our K8 students as well as the students that we tuition out for high school. So that's where that figure comes from. It's the total number of students that Southampton is responsible for. So these funds are treated as offsetting revenue, so you won't see this reflected in the expenditure report that I just briefly summarized. However, this does benefit the bottom line, so you won't see it on the expenditure report, but you will see it on the revenue report, and ultimately, it's how those, the expenditures and revenues reconcile as far as how our final balance ends and what we return to the town potentially. So we also have to factor in these funds as well because these are offsetting to to some of these expenditures that we've incurred this year. So these primarily, these expenditures that we're associating with this fund are originally items that we had earmarked from FEMA reimbursement. If you recall, FEMA had approved us for funding for COVID-related expenses, however, they had since rescinded any FEMA funding for schools. However, we still had that, those expenditures. Um, however, um, we still had that, those expenditures, so those, those were, are, are the bulk of these expenditures. And if you'll, if you look at the memo I included, I d- I have included a list of the type of, um, you know, costs that we did incur. Um, that includes sneeze guards, um, you know, desktop guards, electrostatic sprayer, um, sanitizer, face masks, um, you know, PPE, um, you know, two-way radios, HEPA air filters, um, some software, um, and, and then different online curriculum. So this, um, we have received these funds, um, and, um, we, this does help us, um, from a, a budget standpoint. Uh, I just wanted to point this out because it's, you won't see it explicitly, um, included on the expenditure report. However, please know that we do have this twenty-two thousand dollars that will help offset those costs. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions in regard to the financials.
Good. Thanks for highlighting that. Um, it was kind of goo- it was good to see it. Kind of be made aware of it. Um, Becky or Sharon, do you guys have anything on the finance side?
No, thanks, Matt.
Welcome.
Well said. Thank you.
Great. Um, and then next on the agenda is the, uh, operating budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, Matt, do you just want to run through?
Or we emailed it out? Yeah, absolutely. So, um, as you're all aware, we, um, we re- reviewed the operating budget and, um, the proposed operating budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Um, one question that was raised during our, um, budget review session, um, revolved around the special education expendable trust. So, um, we had, we had stated that those, that the, that trust um, could, can only be utilized for unanticipated costs. However, I, you know, I stated I would, um, verify that. Um, and it, it turns out that, um, within SAU twenty-one, there, there's the, these trusts are um, worded a little differently by districts. Um, so Southampton happens to be a district that does not include language that, um, that specifies that it needs to be an unanticipated expenditure to utilize the trust. So we are, we do have that option to utilize this trust to potentially under budget the, um, or under-fund a special education account, um, while budgeting. So typically, we would not advise for under budgeting in special education. Um, as you know, special education, um, can have unexpected costs. It can be, it's a, it's a highly variable and volatile, um, account. That being said, this is a unique year, um, so one option that we can consider is reducing our, um, special education tuition account by, um, well, by any amount, but I would suggest, you know, one option would be sixty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, um, which is the, um, the differential between the default budget and the, the proposed operating budget. So this would result, um, this would result in a seven point four seven percent increase or, um, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollar increase. Um, as you know, we worked really hard to bring forth a budget that, um, that was as fiscally responsible as possible, considering some very difficult, um, contractually and legally mandated items this year. Um, so this would be an option to mitigate some of, some of those costs and bring forth, um, you know, a, a lower, um, proposed budget. Um, now, if you were to eat the, to un- to hedge and under budget, um, we, the intent would be to utilize, to withdraw that sixty-three thousand dollars or whatever number you choose. However, if we go through the year and we recognize savings elsewhere, we don't necessarily need to withdraw it. And we, we wouldn't recommend withdrawing if it wasn't necessary. Um, and I, and for your reference, I do want to point out that the current balance of the trust is, is a hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. So that would bring it down to, um, just about one hundred thousand dollars. Um, so I wanted to, um, bring this to the board's attention. Um, and if there was a change that the board would like to, to make, then, um, we, we could certainly, um, you know, the, the board could certainly motion for, for a change in the, in the operating, proposed operating budget, um, that we would bring forth to the budget committee.
So what I was thinking about this, um, I, I think we should, when we go to the budget committee, we should go as we agreed yesterday. Um, but it is something for us to be aware of, um, when we have our discussion with them. Um, you know, something, you know, if we felt, uh, the need to make any modifications as part of that discussion, um, that might be the, the time we, I'd rather have the discussion first and then, you know, make a decision. As opposed to choosing to do so today. So just Becky and Sharon, just so you guys.
Yeah.
Just from understanding that sixty-three thousand, if we withdrew that, that would bring the budget to the default, the same amount as the default budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
So now there's some kid, there's some considerations to be made. So to, to Jim's point, it's, it's, it's a good, um, good informational piece to print, to, to have as an option for the budget committee. Uh, because should we make that withdrawal? Like I said, we bring that balance down to about a hundred thousand dollars. So that's, that's not, that, we could potentially have another displacement unanticipated that could well exceed a hundred thousand dollars. And then we would, we'd be, you know, that, that could be problematic. Um, additionally, then following year, so when we're budgeting for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, this one account, we have to increase by sixty-three thousand dollars, right? Because we artificially reduced it this year. But that cost isn't going away the following, you know, I mean, it potentially could go away, but it will likely be there the following year. So that will be a sixty-three thousand dollar increase that next budget year. So, because we, we can't do this in perpetuity. So there, there are, there, there are implications to, to under budgeting that aren't, you know, that, that could, that we do need to consider. So I, I agree with, with Jim. It's a, it's a, it's, it's good to have that discussion and at least have that available if it's needed.
Okay, great. Um, any other questions on this or? When is the, um, I think I have it here. When is that meeting anyways? Um, with the budget committee?
Let me see.
Looks like.
Um, will we still fund that, um, this year through, through an art- warrant article?
So we do, we do not have, um, we have not proposed a, a warrant, any warrant articles to fund the expendable trust considering the, um, the current year, the climate and the, the high cost this year. Um, our meeting with the budget committee is scheduled for, um, January eleventh, um, at seven PM. That's, uh, it's technically a public hearing.
Great. Yeah, Becky, if we were to, I think if we were to consider ta- tapping into it, we would probably look to add that part, that warrant article.
Okay, good.
Cause it, it would just, you're bringing it down to a level where it's very risky.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And we just, we, we've seen it this year, right? There's a hundred thousand dollar.
I didn't think that, cause we only have one, I, I, forgive me for not remembering what it is yesterday, but we just have one article that's going up, correct?
Yeah, it's just the roof.
Roof, okay.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Um, on new business and the agenda, it's policies first read. Um, this is really for informational purposes. Does anybody have any questions or highlights they wanted to?
These policies were, um, uh, we covered these in the, in the, um, policy committee and many of them are, some of them are replacing old policies due to new legislation, uh, particularly around sexual harassment. Um, and then there are quite a list of, of other ones as well.
Yeah. I'll be honest, I haven't gone through all of them.
I was gonna say I'd take questions, but don't.
It used to be a lot easier when I was on the policy committee. Um, but yeah, this will go to, uh, the joint board meeting and, um, for the second read and vote, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, next is the reopening plan or just update on it for the second trimester.
So usually, um, Bill covers some pieces on this as far as, uh, the next phase for your school. However, Southampton has been successful as Michelle outlined. Yeah, I don't want to jinx anything. Um, but that's really true. That's the key to the, a sustained open building is keeping all those protocols with fidelity. So the cohorts, the screening, staying home if you're sick, wearing masks, um, six feet distancing, all of those things are, they're working, so congratulations on doing that. Especially as we see the substantial increase in, in cases in New Hampshire, so good job, everybody.
I, I suppose I can give an update on the RLA, um, specifically around K through four. Uh, we haven't seen any unanticipated swings, uh, specifically towards face-to-face instruction from RLA. Um, in fact, if, if we're seeing any changes across the SAU, it's more towards, uh, remote learning. Uh, so, so nothing unanticipated there. We know what to expect come trimester two. Um, the only other update from RLA is, um, we have been able to implement the IXL, um, diagnostic uh, across the board. So those who are transferring from Remote Learning Academy back into Southampton, uh, we're going to have some benchmarks, uh, for them in terms of literacy and math. Um, and you know, this is going to be specifically around any tier two and, and tier three interventions. We're going to need tier two interventions specifically. Um, so we were, we're keeping our fingers on that and, um, status quo with the RLA otherwise.
Great. Yeah, I think for, uh, Southampton, we're kind of seeing people come back into the classroom. It's really, uh, just a testament to how well, um, everybody's done. So also want to thank Kira for, uh, from, uh, making sure everybody's, you know, being healthy in the, in the building. Um, I know she's working hard with you guys, so.
Amesbury Middle School and High School got to school today.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Just went a kind of going back to on, is that still going on Monday or? That's not Monday. All right, well, Amesbury's back. We got that. That's bulk of our high school kids. All right, um, okay, I think that's pretty much, I mean, it's like the pretty much covers everything. Um, I don't think any, we have any need for a non-public session. The, um, the next meeting dates are, um, we actually got rid of this Thursday budget review, right, Matt? That's gone now. We covered it all yesterday. And then, um, so the next school board meeting is January the seventh at four thirty. And, uh, I want to thank everybody for, uh, for getting on here and I see there's a lot of staff that joined as well. I appreciate that. Um, it's good to see. I think I saw five of them total. Um, so thank you for, for jumping on. Um, and before we adjourn, any other comments or things people want to talk about? I think we're good. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at five sixteen.
Second.
All right, I think we can vote just with our hands. All right, thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Thank you.